I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. Autumn, please call the roll.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Marmee?
Here.
Mr. Ratt?
Here.
Mr. Roletta?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Guthrie?
Here.
We have all present this evening. Next, we have invocation by Mr. Johnson followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please try.
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you as humble servants. Be with us and bless us in our work and our deliberations. We are thankful for the spring and thankful that we can live in a place of peace. Be with those in need. Be with those who experience joy. And may we continue to serve you and our neighbors. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, William, for getting me started. Good to see you again. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything that may be pertinent to the agenda this evening. Do we have anything? Okay. Next, we have the minutes of the March 16, 2015 Newark City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Ratt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have two reports this evening of standing committees, one from capital improvements and one from personnel. Getting this finance and service on here, but we don't have those minutes done yet. Somebody decided to take a vacation. The tan one up here beside me. Those will be on our next agenda. Okay. Next this evening, we have a public hearing. If you'd like to open a public hearing, Autumn, would you read it, please?
Yes. Notice is hereby given that the Newark City Council shall take action upon ordinance number 14-36 on April 6, 2015. Said ordinance accepts a proposed amendment to the zoning map attached to ordinance 08-33A, which would allow the change of zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 2266 River Road, Lincoln County, Ohio. The amendment would change the zoning of the property from AG Agricultural Zoning District to MFR Multi-Family Resident Zoning District, zoning code of the city of Newark, Ohio.
Thank you, Autumn. Mr. Rhodes, could you come up just a second to make sure I have this straight? I know everyone does.
I understand this piece of legislation we have for the public hearing. If this is passed, then there's two options that you're discussing, whether we do a $44,000 or a TIF.
Yes. What we did is Councilman Marmee had asked early on that this be voted, the rezoning be voted on separately from an agreement with the developer. The agreement that we have with the developer is just that they will pay a one-time fee to the city of $44,000, or they will pay the attorneys to have a TIF put into place, which the city would receive those dollars each year for roadway improvements. And should this pass tonight, I would be back in Service Committee next Monday night to make a presentation. The administration prefers the TIF mechanism, but again, that would be up for council to decide. But that's why we're doing it this way.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. This is a public hearing. Any comments for or against? Just like to raise your hand and come on up. Sure, just give us your name and address.
Sorry. John Lottelier, Senior Vice President of Redwood, 23775 Commerce Park Drive, Beechwood, Ohio, 44122.
Close enough.
I'm here just to, I guess, answer any questions that there may be of council. I didn't prepare a real formal presentation. We're just proposing to expand what we're already constructing on our River Trails Phase One over onto this property with an additional 44 units. I do have a trifold brochure if council would like to see, you know, a little bit about our company. There's one for everybody there. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in this public hearing, either for or against? Once again, anyone else for or against? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Autumn, would you read this for the second reading?
Ordinance 14-36 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Ratt, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 2260 River Road, city of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of AD Agricultural District to MFR Multi-Family Residence District.
You've heard the second reading of 14-36. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cost? I'd like to make a motion to adopt 14-36.
Motion by Mr. Cost. Second. Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 14-36 by anyone? Mr. Ratt?
Yeah, I guess I'll wait a little bit. You know, I would, I've got to be honest with you, I'm very torn on this. I know we've had some residents that have expressed disinterest or dissatisfaction with the development in that area, and a lot of concern, and I totally understand their concerns. I myself have expressed some concerns about just the general attitude of the company and their willingness to be a good neighbor. They told us that they would, and in some cases have acted that way, in some cases have not. You know, this is, we're asking to rezone a property that's to multifamily that's right next to a property that's zoned for multifamily. If we vote this down, I could anticipate a court case, and it's still going to get resolved. So I can't vote against it, but I, I don't know, I guess I just have some general concerns still, and hope that they will be good neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt. Anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
No.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
14-36 passes 7-3. Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening, we have communications. We have one, two, three, four communications this evening. Without objections, those will be received and filed. We have a little agenda misprint this evening. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. That wasn't left off intentionally so you wouldn't speak. That was just left off also on my vacationer. We have two sections for comments from citizens. One is now, and one is after the legislation. I just ask you to raise your hand and come on up, and you can speak. Just let us know what's on your mind. This is not a question and answer with council. This is your opportunity to be heard.
My name is William Butcher, 1, let's see, 263 Union Street, Goodback. I thought that my neighbors been complaining to me about the potholes in the back of the alley by the lift. Asked me, says, "William, what you going to do about the potholes?" I said, "Look, I'm not a city council member." I said, "Well, I do, I said, "Well, I talk to the city about fixing the potholes in the alley." Now, my caseworkers been driving through the alleys, and they spray rough on their vehicles, and I've been seeing a lot of people hot rodding through there with the potholes, and I just wanted to, I was just, I was just really blown away by what they've been doing, my speed to the potholes, everything else, and, you know, I just wondered what the city's going to be doing about. My, by before storm forecast, Supermarch should be moving out of here by there on Saturday or tonight, by tomorrow, chance showers, or thunderstorms. We've got high pressure systems coming through Ohio. Once that comes through, we're getting their front body, it's going to be storm right here over Ohio for the next few days. We could see some temperatures in the mid to 70 to 75. Most of the people will see temperatures in the mid to upper 80 by middle of next week, by middle of next week, around the down around the High River. I will get to the weather forecast.
Thank you, William. Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments? Okay. Let's go on to ordinances on the second reading, 15-06.
Ordinance 15-06 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt, Mr. Blake, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the Department of Property Maintenance by reclassifying the Account clerk one position to the position of property maintenance inspector slash analyst and setting compensation therefore.
You've heard the second reading of 15-06. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Floyd?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass 15-06.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 15-06? Mrs. Floyd?
I'd just like to say, we've all been saying for a long time now that we need more help in property maintenance, and I think by reclassifying this position, it gives us some of that help. I'm not saying we don't need more at some point, but at least I think this will help.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
15-06 passes 10-0. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 15-07.
Ordinance 15-07 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and position authorization tables of the city of Newark Division of Cemetery and Parks to abolish one full-time position of project assistant and one full-time position of Cemetery and Parks crew leader, and creating one full-time position of Cemetery and Parks crew leader project assistant.
15-07 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-08.
Resolution 15-08 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Blake, Mr. Ratt, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee. This is an ordinance to provide for the issuance of $370,000 of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of improvements to the city's landfill and all necessary pertinences thereto in declaring an emergency.
15-08 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
Move to adopt 15-08.
Second. Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 15-08? See, now, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
15-08 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 15-09.
Ordinance 15-09 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, Mr. Marmee. This is an ordinance to provide for the issuance of, not to exceed, $2 million of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of the Buckeye Corridor Stormwater Plan, sewer improvements, and all necessary pertinences thereto in declaring an emergency.
15-09 is on the first reading, but also an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
Move to adopt 15-09.
Second. Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-08?
Mr. President, I just want to say that the storm water, obviously, it's been spring, so water and rain throughout our cities is going to be occurring most definitely this time of year, but the residents affected by the Buckeye Corridor Stormwater Plan have been waiting for action for a long time. So I think this project's a good project that Mr. Loomis and Mr. Moore had brought forward to us, and starting with 30th and the Washington Street intersection, I'm sorry, Church Street, thank you, correct myself, or Ms. Ratt, correct me, but that will be the beginning of getting to other areas in this plan, so I think this is a worthy project. I'm glad to see it before us today and hope everyone supports it. I do have, have to say, though, I did have coffee with our auditor, and it's just, this will be new debt for us, and so the auditor and I have talked and, you know, trying to understand what our deficit, you know, our annual debt versus our overall debt, and so hopefully we could work out some issues to better communicate that or make it more easily accessible as to knowing what our debt and our versus our deficit is. So just making sure that all council knows that this is new debt for us, so, but I do support it, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
15-09 passes 10-0. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, 15-23.
Resolution 15-23 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
15-23 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-25.
Resolution 15-25 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, Mr. Marmee, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to apply for financial support from the state of Ohio 2015 Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund program.
15-25 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-26.
Resolution 15-26 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to enter into a lease purchase agreement for the lease purchase of one EMS transport medic unit for the Division of Fire.
15-26 will be held for a second reading. And finally this evening, we have 15-27.
Resolution 15-27 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
And 15-27 will be held for a second reading. And that concludes our legislation this evening. Thank you for your attention. Next on the agenda, we have the second opportunity for comments from citizens. Same rules applies the first. If you'd like to speak, just put up your hand. I'll recognize you, we'll put you up here and allow you to say your piece. I got you, Nicky.
Charles Moore, 120 North 24th Street. One of the things I just want to, well, there's two things here. First is about emails that all the council members, I sent out a group email probably about a month and a half ago to everybody. And as mail goes through the postal service, I think we know you can go regular mail, send you a letter, registered mail, where you can sign for it or somebody else, or what they call a registered mail, and then there's a certified registered mail, where you actually have to sign for whatever you're picking up. So I sent out an email that was also marked high priority for an ask, reply, read reply, and also in the subject matter to confirm that the email was actually read. It wasn't like I was asking for a bunch of questions to be answered or anything like that. But in the last bottom paragraph, couple sentences, so just out of courtesy to know that I know that you have read my email, which was not long, lengthy, or anything out of the ordinary, just please reply in the subject matter or something, just three words. That's it. That's all I was asking. You didn't have to say, "Good email, bad email, thank you, no thank you, whatever." And I've not gotten any replies, so I just wanted to say, everybody says they read the emails. I think, well, I don't know how you, that's four tiers. It's an email, high priority, read reply, plus I put subject matter. If you read this, just put that in there. Nothing. And that's okay, because, you know, emails happen where sometimes something goes wrong, so if somebody did, I will stand corrected. And it's not too late to reply, by the way. The other thing, too, is I want to get on to is, oh, I think it's a few weeks ago, I wanted to bring up the word young. I think we all know that young is a relative term. It's a descriptive term. I don't think it's a derogatory term. It was used here a few meetings ago concerning Alex Roletta. I don't think, you know, saying young, Alex, you are young, and I would say probably by, I don't know, majority of the people in this room. And that's not, nothing offensive, it's a fact. So saying young Roletta, I think, is perfectly fine and acceptable. It wasn't derogatory. So I think if someone wants to misconstrue that into something that it isn't, you know what I'm saying? And not only that, I think Alex is a big boy. I think if he has a problem, and he wants to stick up for himself to say something, he has an opportunity to do that. I mean, I think that's fair for someone else to point something out like that. I think if I was you, I'd be a little bit embarrassed myself that someone else is painting out something there, and I just don't think it was necessary, and I don't think it was out of place, because like I say, young is just, if somebody could say middle-aged or old, you know, to someone, it's descriptive, and it's a relative term. So I think before, sometimes I talk about some of these issues, I just want to get some of the communication stuff down first. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I will say this about the email. I know I personally am having a problem with my city email, and I know John Carson's working on it. I don't know about anybody else, but I know I've not gotten...
What's his email address? What is his email address?
What is your email address, sir?
3C Solutions@Riverrunner.com. It's a numeral three, or the letter three, or the number three, sorry.
Number three, then C, then Solutions?
Correct.
And when did you send that out?
I'd say it was a month and a half ago, well, a month and a half ago about.
Well, and I apologize, because I know I'm having trouble with mine, but I don't know whether anybody else is or not, so, yeah. Well, we are working on that.
I mean, I, well, I don't know if I stated this or not, but there was, I did get, out of all the ones I sent, I did get like, I think, four read replies, so I know the package was open.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Arter, where are you? Who are you next?
Nikki Arter, 1314-2, Jobs Road, Newark, Ohio. During the March 16 meeting when Newark City Council voted to do nothing with the current dog law and the BSL, the following made these statements. Mr. Cost said, "He was concerned there was nothing in place to address any irresponsible dog owners if the legislation were repealed." Mr. Roletta said, "I do not necessarily believe that brief specific laws are the answer to this problem. However, the proposal before council does nothing that would help hold bad owners more accountable for their animals. Without additional measures that would promote owner responsibility and public safety, I have come to the conclusion that I cannot support this proposal." Mr. Bub said, "Nothing at all. Mr. Bub has never addressed us as citizens who mean anything to him, for we are invisible to him, for now." And Mr. Guthrie said, "I am determined to get it right and bring forth legislation that makes sense." Six council people fought the citizens who came to all meetings making arguments for a silent majority who never came to council. All fought for people that never once voted their opinions publicly. All the no votes listed to dog.org and not Newark City citizens. But some stated their reasons couldn't be passed on March 16. All of you owe these citizens a timely counteroffer of your version of repealing the BSL and making bad owners responsible. You had time to amend but did nothing. Are you still going to do nothing? To all the no votes with all your reasons, where is the new improved legislation you promised? promised? Please schedule a safety meeting tonight and get this back on the table with your revisions." That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Law?
Yeah.
You did, you had your hand up, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name's Terry Lyle. I'm at 294 Stair Road here in Newark. I'm going back to the emails. I have found that if I send out a blanket email, or if I put everybody in, it gets bounced back to me that the server didn't accept it. So it's gotten to where, if I want to send an email, I have to go in and send individual emails to each person in order to, for anybody to get them. And this has happened to me numerous times, and I've had a couple other people tell me the same thing. I don't know, I don't know why it's not, why they're bouncing back, but they are. As far as the BSL, let's get this thing right this time. I'm all for strict penalties for people that are irresponsible and abusers. I'm all for that, but I'm also all for the people who own these dogs not to be hogtied by an unenforceable ordinance just because they choose a specific type of dog. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Anyone else? Hang on, William, you can go last.
Paul Moran, 63, North Fourth Street. I was here at the last council meeting, and I spoke out against the Advocates Five, the Thrive series I got going. And as usual, I was correct. As you saw in the following article, that they falsely claim Newark has 5,500 dog openings. Why aren't they filled? Well, all of us Newark residents know that's false, but some on the internet, miles and miles away, they may accept that for gospel truth. They may. And it said, "We have this kind of newspaper that's deceiving the people left and right." And the answer to that, the answer to that question is, those jobs do not exist. And why? Because of all the job losses we've had. Meyer, Newark Electroplating, Metal Specialties Corp., neighborhood stores, and yes, even the Advocates Print Presses staff, all out of work. And that's been within the last two to three years, all these job losses. I encourage the paper to at least correct this false, untrue, front-page statement. You know, some red, right bold print, so they really bragged it up. Don't know why. Now, a couple other separate items. There's a sewer cover and curb pavement that has completely sunk into this Union Street. It's completely down in there. It's got to be fixed. The asphalt's broken up, and the curb, the sewer lid's down in it. This needs to be taken care of right away. Next, there's an unsecure vacant building over here on West Market Street near South Sixth. One of the doors is propped open, and the other door has no knob on it, so it's easy access to homeless, or drug dealers, or whoever wants to use the building. Yeah, I just brought up the Market Street building here not too long ago, and it's still standing, unfortunately, but there are signs on it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. William?
My name's William Butcher, 263 Union Street. There was a narrow pothole up around Chauvin Road, and right up around West Main Street, around, you know, West Main Street. Those potholes need to be patched up. And my guy friend, he's a bus driver, he's been coming to me, asking me, he says, "When the, when West Main Street potholes gonna be patched up?" I said, "I don't know when." I don't know when, but he's asking me, he says, "Can't get on City Council, nobody?" I says, "Okay, I will." So I'm coming to you tonight and ask you about those potholes on West Main Street and the alley that's behind me. It's, it's, it's old potholes, it looks like, it looks like Swiss cheese with holes in. I just wonder what the city's gonna do, but I'm afraid people might break the axle, or bust the tire on their cars, or, you know, see something done about that. And my forecast, mainly cloudy rest of the night, change to rain, fly tomorrow, highs about 6, 7, change to rain by Thursday, Wednesday. Two showers, thunderstorms, probably Wednesday, high about 75. But people can see temperatures mid-80s down around the High River. I will give you weather for forecast.
Okay, William. Anyone from the administration this evening? We were done, Mrs. Barber.
I'm sorry, I just got here. I had to write in from Columbus. I'm Rhonda Barber. I live at 917 Glamour Avenue. And I just want to take time to thank the law director for taking time out of his very busy day to sit and meet with me to discuss the BSL laws and all the procedures. Thank you, Doug. But I do want to tell the elected council that I've sat here three or four times, and none of you dispelled any of the myths that I heard. It took the law director to take time to say, "No, there's an administrative procedure, and there's some other things that need to be done." And so, as our elected body, you guys need to better communicate with the people that elected you. Mr. Bub, you have your office number listed, but there's no prompts, so I don't know how to get in touch with you when we call. I just think that there's been a whole bunch of stuff going on, and you guys could have done a better job in communicating what's going on with BSL. And hopefully, in my conversations with Doug, he may put a link on the website to kind of explain things, and tell people where to go and what to do. And I'm meeting with the police chief tomorrow for the same thing, just to make some inroads, because I see lots of division, and I think it's your responsibilities to bring us together and not tear the community apart. And on a final note, I met with the mayor, and he is reestablishing the Human Relations Commission. So if anybody wants to sit on the commission, send the mayor a note. I think there's, I don't know how many people are on the commission. Five?
Five, we're sitting.
So if you're interested in sitting on the Human Relations Commission, which is a feel-good commission where people can come... Are you laughing?
That was Mr. Raff. I know not to laugh at you, Rhonda.
Which is a feel-good commission where people can come and vent, and we kind of provide some direction on how they can have whatever issue they're having with it in the city resolved. So that's it. Thank you.
I'm actually a little impressed that you have that sweatshirt on, and Mr. Sassen still met with you instead of having a Clemson sweatshirt on.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. He had it on, he had it on.
Thank you, Mrs. Barber. Okay. Anyone else?
Ally Wong, 217 South Quentin. Because of the law that you guys passed on BSL here in Newark, I have to now check in with the PO once a month. I might even have to wear an ankle bracelet, monitor, and I have to be supervised, because I was minding my own business and my house, and so was my dog. Your guys' law got me in trouble. It needs passed, something needs to be done, because this has gone way too far now. I understand the fine slap on the wrist, but two fourth-degree misdemeanors, having to wear an ankle monitor, and being supervised every day, all day long, that's a little harsh. That's way harsh. But y'all really need to rethink about that, please.
Thank you. You do know that's the same law that's been on the books for a while. I mean, it's not new.
Well, yeah, but because you guys don't profit.
I understand. I understand your point, I'm just making that point.
A lot of people don't know about the law. To this day, they still don't know about it, until they get caught. It's true.
Anyone else? I know someone else had their hand up behind our honor there. Yes, sir.
My name is Lloyd Triple. I live at 388 Mount Vernon Road. And I got a dog problem, too. For eight months, I've been trying to get that woman to keep asking her, "Please let your, take your dogs elsewhere, not my front yard." My front yard's a full crap, nobody even cut my grass anymore, because they ain't gonna walk through it or run their lawnmower through it. Now, Carol, whatever, I guess she did something to get her stopped for a while, but that didn't last long. I come home today, and there's a big pile of manure in my front yard, upside the sidewalk. And one day during the wintertime, there was snow on the ground, and there was a fresh pile on my front yard, so I got this, I didn't get the snow shovel, but I had a friend get to take a snow shovel and bump it on her front porch. So what she do that night? She busted outside the window of my house. Our house is about, probably 15 feet apart, and it was a side window that got busted out. She busted out my window, and I called the police. Police come up and knocked on her door, didn't get any answers, so they left. So now she doing it again. She got three big dogs, and I just can't seem to get anybody to do anything about it. I warned her, and I said, "Please don't," and other people warned her, and everybody else tells me, "She brings those dogs in your yard all the time." I said, "I know, but what can I do about it?" So that was one thing I wanted to say. Another is that, I have a sob story to tell you. I'm soon to be 75, and you're a maintenance guy, you just won't leave me alone. He just picks on me, he's spent all my retirement money trying to, trying to satisfy him. I went down here a couple different times and tried to talk to him, say, "I'll do what you want, but give me some time, you know, don't give me 30 days, I can't work anymore." So I can't do anything for myself anymore. So now he's spent all my retirement money, and I've worked all my life. I don't drink, or I don't smoke. I haven't done that for 28 years. I've never done drugs, and I can't even afford teeth. When I was in the wheelchair, I ran over my teeth and busted them up. I can't afford to buy new ones. I don't have insurance on my house, or stove, my house, my ceiling leaks in my kitchen, no money to fix it all, because he's breaking me up. He's charging me $500 for each property I got. I've got a bunch of rentals. It was okay for a while, but the economy went bad, and they set them empty. And they break into them, they stole all the copper plumbing out of a couple of them, all the, all the wiring and everything else. I put screws in the doors, bolted them shut and everything, and they go down here a couple days later, and there they are, busted into them again. A bunch of druggies is what they are, I guess. I've told that Joe Paul, "Yeah, give me some time." He's charging me $500 for this and $500 for that and everything. He wants me, he's not gonna be happy until he sees me living under a bridge. So I don't know what I can tell you. I just complain about that, about his, he wears that badge, and he wants to bully you all around and show you that badge, that he's chicken roost. I can know pleasing him. So he gets me a $150 for, because I didn't have an address painted on my building, or stamped on my building, whatever. I delivered pizzas in this town for 23 years, and half the addresses I went to didn't have an address on the buildings. Then I moved people for 24 years, and I know half the people don't have addresses on the buildings, but I get fined for it. Got me for chip paint on the house, and I'm not allowed to scrape it off, but it needs painted, but he won't let me paint it. He says it'd be $10,000 fine if I try and paint it. So, because he said they're led to paint them, so what do you do? So I guess that's about the end of my sob story. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Triple. What'd you say your address was?
Mine, 388 Mount Vernon Road.
Thank you.
Yeah, the person with the dogs is 3, probably 386 Mount Vernon Road.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the administration? Our honor, Mr. Johnson?
I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our honor, the law director, Sassen?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass.
Mayor is sick this evening. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, I'll pass.
Mr. Johnson?
I'll pass.
Mr. Marmy?
I'll pass.
Mr. Raff?
I'll pass.
Of course.
But I'll be brief, I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Rhodes. We had a group of citizens that were very concerned about an alley with a lot of potholes that had access to about 16 different families, and I contacted Mr. Rhodes on that, amazingly quick response. And everybody's happy, everybody's satisfied, so I wanted to thank you for that. If you're having troubles getting emails to us, sending them as a group, don't, just send one email to Autumn, and ask Autumn to send them to us. Autumn is our clerk, and she can send them out to all of us, and does many, many times every single day, so we know she has no issues getting emails to us. So if you can get an email to Autumn, she can get them to us. But I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. And that is klain@newarkohio.net. K-L.
K-L-E-I-N.
K-L-E-I-N. I always spell that wrong. Mr. Ruleta?
Thank you, Mr. President, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Ruleta. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Happy birthday, by the way.
Thank you, sir. I do want to, well, first I'll say that I want to celebrate Carmen's Pizza. They've had seven years in business. They're a small business, and if you've ever started a small business, you know that reaching that seven-year mark is an achievement. And so, I talked to Jim and Janelle, and they're doing well down on National Drive. And we got sort of a pizza war going down in the South End between Brewskis and Carmen's, but nonetheless, both businesses are doing well, so I want to just mention them publicly. Saturday, this coming Saturday, we do have a cleanup day in the South End, April 11th, and we're going to begin at, or gather at St. John's United Church, 285 West National Drive at 8:30 a.m. And so all the volunteers are asked to arrive at the church then, and then they'll get a cleanup assignment. And so they'll go throughout the community and either help either a veteran, or a senior citizen, or a person with a disability clean up something outside their homes, or mulching, or pulling weeds, or something of that nature. And then we're also going to have other cleanup projects where they're just going to pull out tires, for example, out through some of the alleys. But that's going to happen on Saturday. Volunteers arrive at St. John's at 8:30, and then after the cleanup project, we'll have lunch for all the volunteers. And so hopefully, if you're available, please feel free to come up to that. The last thing I want to, well, not the last thing, but I'll mention this before I mention the last thing. Mr. Moore, we did have an email exchange at the beginning of February regarding potholes with the alley that you had with school buses.
Right, so I was familiar that the email system was working, so I also got emails, and the schedule's running on, so I may have noticed.
Well, maybe I'll talk to you afterwards about what email message you're referring to, but we can, I know we've emailed before about potholes in this school bus route alley, so something's going on there. But my last comments are related to, several of us have had connections to the Yes Club. And, you know, the Yes Club is an after-school program for at-risk youth. And this Friday, April 10th, is the last day for V. Hoddle. She is retiring. And so, you know, if many of you are able to go and visit the Yes Club between now and Friday, you know, V. started pretty much, well, she did start the Yes Club. I think she came in maybe a year after it actually started, but pretty much she's been the founder and been the person to keep the, keep everything moving there, going from a small home to actually having a beautiful facility over there near the post office. And so, for those of you that have had connections with the Yes Club, please feel free to stop by, give your well wishes to V., and then I believe fight it, they're going to have some type of little celebration for her, for her retirement. So she's been a, you know, real asset to the community, but we wish her well as she moves on to this next chapter in her and her family's career, or life. And with that, I'll call finance committee, and then with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Bub?
I'll pass, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Mr. Cost?
I need to call a service committee meeting for next Monday. With that, I will pass.
Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd?
I just have one thing. I think several of the block watches are going to get together on April the 21st at 6 o'clock at Community Wesleyan Church, and the Drunk Task Force is going to talk to them. I know in the two block watches I go to, there've been concerns. Sometimes people don't know what to do if they see, like, needles in their front yard, or like a pop bottle that has stuff in it. That might be meth or something. And so, this meeting is open to everyone, so it's April 21st at 6 o'clock at Community Wesleyan Church. It's at the corner of 21st and Myrtle. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Guthrie?
Thanks, Mr. President. Glad Jeremy brought up V. Hoddle, because V. has really done wonderful things there at the Yes Club for a long period of time. I was not actually aware of Jeremy. That's good information, and thank you. I want to share with council that I am a proud grandpa again. My daughter Lori, the mother of Charis, had a little girl this morning. Her name is Jenna Eve, and she weighed eight pounds and three ounces, and she, she's quite a little girl. I, I don't think it would be fair not to recognize some of the points that were made tonight. I, I have tried really in good faith to, to do my research and not research via dog.org, as you referred to it as, Nikki, regarding the dog issue. And I, I'm actually continuing to explore whether there are any options. One of the things that I, I feel like I made a point at saying at a council meeting is that I would very much like to see this on the ballot. And I know some people think that that's not where it belongs. I'm one who believe that it does belong there so that all citizens can speak. I don't know what the status is of your effort on that, but as I indicated before, I would even be willing to sign a petition, to put it before the residents of our city. I think that when Ms. Loomis's legislation passed, I guess, close to a year and a half ago, you know, we all felt that it, by establishing parameters whereby good pit bull owners could basically bypass the law with the AKC training, you know, we thought that we did the right thing. I'm going to continue to look at the enforcement piece. You know, I've already met with some folks in law enforcement community, and I'm meeting with some folks in the legal community, and it is a, it's a perplexing issue, but I would very much like to see it on the ballot so everybody could vote on it. It's a misconception to think that, that, you know, everybody was for the repeal, because the people that were approaching me on the street were not indicating to me that they were for the repeal. And I don't know why there were not folks who came into council chambers, but I do know that I heard from plenty of folks who I did not think we should repeal it. And I expressed some of the same things that I've said tonight. I've even told them that I think that it should be on the ballot where everybody can make the decision, and I hope, hope that's where it ends up. And in the meantime, I'm going to keep doing my research. That's all I can say. And that's all I've got, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Congratulations, by the way, to your grandchildren.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming this evening, we appreciate it. We appreciate you sticking around a minute, we can talk afterwards. Thank you for coming, we appreciate your attention. Our next committee meeting will be April 13th in this room at 5:30. Next full council meeting will be in two weeks, April 20th here at 7:00 p.m. A motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Cost, second by Mr. Raff, all in favor, since I'm saying on it. All the votes. Go to adjourn.